Good evening. We have already opened the meeting in, before going into executive session. Now we're reconvening in open session. And per Governor Baker's orders, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting. Members of the public can access the meeting via Montague Community Television broadcast, but we're also welcoming visitors tonight. And we do have opportunity for public participation. Policy BEDH has been reinstated to hold public participation remotely at this time. And Jennifer Lively, our secretary, has arranged for people who would like that opportunity to have the option. And Jennifer, who do we have first tonight?
Okay, so just to start, I want to remind folks to please stay muted when you're not speaking to reduce background noise. Remember that this is recorded and broadcast on local TV. And please keep your comments to a few minutes so that everybody can get a chance to speak. So to start with, we have Sarah Chase.
Carl?
Hello.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but unfortunately, because this is being broadcast on YouTube for the first time and .us blocks YouTube, I'm getting multiple emails from people who don't know how to get access to the broadcast. Is it possible to send out an all-staff email and tell them they need to log out of .us? Because I presume that's the problem.
Tina, is that what the issue is?
Sorry. My apologies. I need to stop the live stream and redo it.
Tina, is there anything that I could send out along the lines of what Carl suggested?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch what Carl was suggesting.
Carl mentioned that he believes that if people are logged in under .us, that it, that blocks YouTube?
Okay, so I will take care of that as well.
Okay.
If you can just give me a few.
Thank you for your patience. Tina will let us know when the technical difficulties are resolved.
My apologies, folks. A good solution would actually be to log out of their @gmrst.us account. I will get it fixed in a few minutes, but if they, if you would like to...
I'll send out an email to the whole staff.
Thank you.
This might just be a little confusing. So just to clarify for anybody that might be watching on MCTV, this is a link for people that don't live in town so that they can access, you know, because they don't get MCTV. So just to clarify.
Yeah, I think that, um, sorry.
Unfortunately, I got one response that said logging out of .us didn't work. It's only one, so I don't know if that's conclusive, but I thought that I thanked that out.
Hey, Dean, this is Tina. Can you reset the YouTube, the live stream, please? Thank you.
Tina, another message I received said people are asking, getting messages requesting a login.
Thanks, Dean.
Tina, you're not muted either, in case you get frustrated.
Give me a break. Brian, I'm gonna go ahead and send the GMS MRSD staff the login to Zoom, and I'll let them in.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, I've sent the link. People will start coming in. Jane, if you don't mind sending out another reminder to keep them muted and use off. Thank you.
Okay.
Sure.
It's okay. We'll just wait a couple of minutes to let people join that way.
Hi, buddy.
I've never done it on my finger before. Just a reminder, if you're coming in as the audience, please remember to keep your video and your audio muted. Thank you. Remember to keep your audio muted.
Okay, I think that's it, Jane.
Are we good now?
Thank you. Reaching capacity, but holding.
Okay. Do you need to give us another count?
Nope, we're going to keep on going. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Welcome, everyone. We apologize. There was a technical delay. We should be all set now. Please remember, if you are here in the audience, please keep your audio and your video off during this time. Thank you. Jennifer, again, who do we have to begin with?
Hi, so we do have a couple folks that are going to speak for public participation. Also, please state your name for the record and keep in mind that this is being recorded and broadcast, and keep your comments to a couple of minutes so that everybody can have a chance. And we will start with Sarah Chase, please.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Sarah Chase and a school teacher at Hillcrest Elementary, as many of you know. I also know that you have heard from me often during this process of figuring out our plans to provide quality education to our students this school year, but in the current climate, I continue to feel the need to speak up. I remain concerned about the rush to return to a hybrid model for not only the health and safety of myself and my family, but for my students and their families. There have been and continue to be daily news reports about school closings across the country due to COVID-19 for various reasons, many of which are the very reasons I have been concerned about all along. I am most concerned to see, as many of the teachers have predicted would happen, that in Attleboro, a student was sent into school with COVID-19 by their parents knowingly. It has been mentioned that parents now know better than to do such an awful thing, since we have all been part of this pandemic together, but this is proof that they do not. COVID-19, I had children dropped off to me in my classroom at the beginning of the school day, with parents announcing that their child had Tylenol and cough syrup that morning, so though they were sick, that they would be fine. And I know there are many reasons parents may need to leave their children off at school sick, but this is a concern with this virus, because this is a virus that can kill someone within two weeks or leave them with long-lasting or permanent health problems, which I have happened to have seen firsthand with one of friends. We are also now seeing teacher deaths reported in the news across the country, and to me, this is simply unacceptable. Yet teachers are now targets of hate. I was raised to love and respect teachers. I was taught that people that became teachers were generally exceptionally caring and selfless people who have dedicated themselves to public service. As an adult, I have been in the field of education for 17 years, 12 of those years as a classroom teacher. I have taught or been a paraprofessional in communities ranging from Heath to Chickapie to Brockton. I have seen a lot, learned a lot, and seen who educators really are. I, as well as other educators in this district, buy families in need Christmas presents, food, clothing, diapers, pull-ups, and school supplies, so that our students do not go without. I have seen all of us work tirelessly for hours, often outside of the school day, to help families in crisis, craft lessons, learn new curriculums, and meet every single demand that is thrown at us every minute of every day. And even when it seems too impossible, impossible to do, we do it, and we never say no. COVID-19 is the first time in my career I have heard educators saying no. Educators who have never, ever said that word in their career before because they always, always, always say yes for the good of their students and their families. These educators are now saying no in order to keep themselves and their families safe from this virus that we continue to learn about daily. That says to me, it is time to listen. It is time, it is a time, it is not a time to guilt us and put us through what is happening and put on us what is happening in the homes of some children during this pandemic. There are agencies that could and should be dealing with those situations. It is simply not right to assault a group of people with guilt and anger on a regular basis because they finally say no when their health and safety, as well as the health and safety of their families, is at stake. I have also heard it said that we are the only district without any students back in-person learning, further trying to guilt educators fighting for their lives. This is simply untrue. Our neighboring district of Greenfield, where my daughter attends, is not back in person at all yet, though there is an eventual plan for priority populations only. There is no talk of typical children returning, as seems to be the push here in Gil-Montague. Finally, I want to speak to the damage I know any in-person learning will do for young children while, while we are in the midst of this pandemic. If we are forced back into school, preschool, we'll be far from the joyous place it was. Children will have to stay six feet from each other and their teachers. There will be no center play, no morning meeting, no socialization, no warm comfort from teachers because of the virus, and very little actual learning will be able to occur. Instead, our day will be filled with attempting to feed children two meals from six feet away, hand washing repeatedly, bathrooming, and perhaps a chance for a story or time with a small pile of manipulatives. We will also be trying not to frighten the children while we are in our PPE as we attempt to build relationships with them before we send them home. I will not be able to comfort a crying child. I will not be able to sit on the floor with them and play as I teach social lessons. I will not be able to help a child with an art project by helping them use scissors or glue. Nothing will be like it was, and it simply will be cruel. I would not want this to be my child's first school experience, nor any other child's. Remote, I can give children a much better, warmer, enriching, and positive experience because I can interact with them in a way that does not jeopardize anyone's health or safety. In closing, I want to be clear that no teacher in this district is refusing to teach. We are simply trying to teach in the safest way possible while the virus is still a risk. We have spent countless hours preparing for remote learning, and parents are reporting they are happy with what we are providing. I know that Commissioner Riley has sent the district a letter basically demanding we return to in-person learning based on the metrics in the towns that Gil-Montague serves, but the commissioner is not seeing the big picture. The towns in our district are not in a bubble. Teachers in the district live all over, Western Mass, Vermont, and New Hampshire, and travel to work in GM-RSD. Their spouses and partners do too, and our families fall into these categories of increased risk of virus exposure as well. Also, our students are being cared for by different people all over the Pioneer Valley, making their exposure to places outside of Gil-Montague very high. I implore you to allow us to stay remote. Please think about the educators who never say no and for once are. Think about why they are saying no and about what I have said here. Think about the young children in our district, and what we want to provide for them is their first school experience. We have an excellent plan in place to educate children remotely. We have all been working very hard and care about our students very much. Let us teach them in a safe way until there is a solution to COVID-19. Thank you.
Thank you. Who do we have next, Jennifer?
Next, we have Kayla Breaks, Biggs. Sorry if I pronounce your names wrong.
No problem. It's Biggs. Hi, everyone. My name is Kayla Biggs. I'm a special education paraprofessional at Hillcrest. This is my fourth year in the district and my 13th year in special education. Thank you to the school committee for the opportunity to speak this evening. I felt moved tonight specifically to address our GM-RSD families and caregivers who might be in attendance. Thank you for being here. I think I can speak for my colleagues when I say that we see you the last couple of weeks. We see how hard you're working. And we thank you for partnering with us in this global crisis, in this enormous shared work of creating safe and effective remote learning for your children. I, like you, want dearly for our classrooms to return to the way they were before COVID-19 swept across our country. I want my students to share toys, monkey bars, and high fives. I want to feel safe greeting them with a hug at school, but that old normal is unlikely to revisit us this school year. Many districts plan at this time to reintroduce priority populations, which would encompass our special education students, English learners, children in foster care experiencing homelessness, et cetera, to our school buildings first. This, we're told, would require the default return of all staff to the building. I believe this places several undue burdens on these students, not to mention their teachers. Our priority students will face the greatest exposure risk by virtue of being in the building, very obviously separated from their typical at-home peers, and face requirements of masking, distancing, hand washing, and general discomfort not required about home peers, which may be easier for some of our older students, but as someone working in early childhood, I know that does pose a really undue burden on some of our students. This raises questions of what in this extreme situation constitutes the legally required least restrictive environment for our children in special education. And in this hybrid model, the teacher who these students, students jump through hurdles to be with physically in the classroom would be simultaneously responsible for teaching the remote cohort online. The old normal, this is not. If hybrid teaching would furnish all of our children with an excellent education remains a very serious question. In my opinion, no. The required safety measures necessary to return to our building would render, as Sarah said, early childhood education as we know it completely unrecognizable. But without a doubt, without even that question, this dual standard for priority populations represents questions about equity. It stretches the capacity of our very skilled educators, and it undermines our principles of inclusion. What if we instead put our collective resources into robust, meaningful, and consistent online learning for everyone? What if we thought creatively about how to support parents and caregivers as essential partners in their children's learning right now? What if we consider alternative models of service delivery to reflect the safety needs of these very unprecedented times? The virus, after all, is not yet behind us. The Washington Post reports that six teachers have died of COVID-19 across five states since reopening began in August. As a lifelong special education professional, I stand with the GM-RSD staff as I stand with your children as parents and caregivers. To me, compromising services, delivery of IEP services is non-negotiable, but neither is the life of a single GM-RSD community member. We can have safe learning this year. It will take our continued partnership and creativity, but as educators and caregivers, we know very well the work of addressing complex problems is itself complex. Simple-seeming solutions and nostalgia for our old normal will not keep us safe. As we are right now, situated in the uncertainties of a novel virulent virus, I wonder, what is the haste? As we work together eventually to reopen, I hope we can agree on one thing. If in-person learning is not safe for all of our school community, it's not safe for any of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Jess Vakula-Curtis.
Thank you. My name is Jessica Vakula-Curtis. I've been teaching here. This is my 15th year in the school district. I'm a high school special ed and English teacher, and I'm sharing a letter that I wrote collaboratively with a large number of my colleagues at the high school. Dear school committee members, as you prepare to vote this evening, I, in a group of my fellow TFHS teachers, have put together the following statement for your consideration. Everyone knows all of the negatives about remote learning, but after seven days of remote teaching, we found some surprising positives as well. Number one, as a high school special education teacher, it's so much easier to give students modified assignments or special accommodations without everyone else knowing. We can also very easily do Google meets one-on-one with kids or arrange extra help sessions after school or in the evening without having to worry about transportation. I surveyed my students Friday to see how their first week went, and 62.5% said that they wanted to remain fully remote and that they actually prefer remote learning to in-person learning, while 37.5% they'd like, said they'd like to try to move to a hybrid model. Number two, students bring their pets to class. This makes everyone happy and even encourages shy or anxious kids to engage built-in comfort pets. This is also one of the many ways for kids to bond. We've noticed a significant amount of camaraderie and acceptance across typical social lines, as well as acceptance and kindness to their peers and teachers. Number three, so much less peer drama. So many of my students, most often girls, told me that they learn so much better this way because they feel less socially anxious. Two of these students routinely refused to enter general education classrooms when we were in school due to their anxiety, and they've been attending all of their remote classes. Number four, remote learning is increasing their independence and time management skills, which will help prepare them for college or jobs. Number five, we're all becoming tech geniuses, and when us adults struggle, the kids offer to teach us. It's good for them to feel confident and be able to show off their skills. Number six, related to the reduced social anxiety, students who usually hide or avoid work in the traditional school setting are participating more in remote learning. Students who are often disruptive are no longer derailing the lesson. In general, remote teaching and learning seems more personal. Students can get immediate responses to questions and have a forum with less risk. For example, during class, students can use the chat function during the Google Meet. Number seven, given the extreme technology malfunctions in our district's buildings last week, including the loss of internet connectivity in the middle school, high school building on multiple occasions, sending all staff home at 10:30 AM on Friday, September 9, we're extremely grateful that we have begun the year teaching remotely. If we had been using the hybrid model, we would not have had the opportunity to do any teaching, nor would students have been able to do any learning for that entire week. Which brings us to our concerns about the hybrid model. We're wondering what exactly the perceived benefits are for our hybrid plan. As we understand it, the plan would be for us to teach exactly the same way that we're teaching under the remote lock model, teacher at a desk in front of a screen with every student on a computer using Google Suite and other educational technology. The only differences between remote and hybrid are that in the hybrid model, teachers would be in the school building with often less reliable internet connection, teaching to some masked, socially-distanced students in the classroom while up to 10 kids at home join from a screen. We're concerned that this model will be even more challenging technologically, and we're unclear as to how we will be able to give the kids at home adequate attention when we're primarily focused on the kids in the classroom in front of us. Students in the classroom will not be participating in activities which involve moving around the learning space, nor will they have the same level of collaboration that they're used to in regular school and will still be on screens for far too much of their school day. If anything, the challenges will be even greater than at home, where teachers can build in breaks and students can get up and move around as they need. In the proposed hybrid model, students will need to remain mostly seated at their desks and have scheduled breaks. Then, in order to promote safety and adherence to social distancing protocols, will prevent typical opportunities to socialize. Further, bringing some students into the classroom while others are still at home will necessitate teachers placing greater emphasis on students in the class, as teachers will need to police mask-wearing and social distancing in addition to typical classroom behaviors, the detriment of students learning remotely. We don't know if parents are aware that this is the hybrid model we're planning to use, but we think that they should be aware that unfortunately, it won't look like normal school. We all look forward to a time when we can go back to normal. We all look forward to a time when we can go back to normal. It's infinitely more gratifying, a lot less work to teach in person. We ask you to vote to continue remote learning instead of directing us to return to a hybrid model that does not benefit the majority of our community's children. And this letter was signed by myself, Heidi Schmidt, Faith Clum, Laura Larson, David Smith, Megan Murphy, Megan Bendixson, John Carter, Dakota Smith-Porter, Crystal Landry, Leslie Charles, and Michael Neid. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Dakota Smith-Porter.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Good evening, educators, school committee, and school and community members. My name is Dakota Smith-Porter. I'm a Gil Montague School District alumna. I am currently employed as a special education teacher at Turner Falls High School. I thank you for your time tonight as I share a portion of my perspective on the reopening of our schools. In February of 1972, Walter Michel, a Stanford social psychologist, published a paper called Cognitive and Attentional Mechanisms in Delay of Gratification. This paper described a behavioral experiment commonly known as the marshmallow experiment. Michel tested hundreds of children to see whether or not they would prefer to receive a small number of tasty marshmallows now or extra tasty marshmallows later. This experiment is a textbook favorite of many psychology professors, as its findings uncovered the fascinating relationship between humans delaying gratification and their life's success. In summary, Michel found that children who had the foresight to wait, be patient, and control their immediate desires were more likely to possess the qualities needed to be successful throughout their lives. I find that my knowledge of Michel's experiment is more relevant to me now than I had ever realized when I first learned about it in Psychology 101. It is a true and hard test to wait. Waiting takes time, energy, and the ability to imagine the future to simply withstand the agony of it. No one likes to wait. Wait in line, wait in traffic, or wait for the bell to ring. Waiting is anti-what-we-want-to-do. We want to do, get, go, and do as we have done before, and understandably so. For who does not want a tasty marshmallow snack and now? But when that snack's risk outweighs the reward, is it worth the wait for something better? I present this question to the school committee when reconsidering the reopening of our beloved educational snack houses. Is the risk of a death of a student, a death of a family member, a death of an educator, a death of a staff member, or a death of a beautiful human being? And that would include all of us. Worth not waiting for. Committee members, are you ready to make life-changing decisions? In my eyes, the risk is too great to not wait. I ask that the school committee delay the gratification of both myself and our community when deciding on the in-person reopening of our schools until it is certain that we can return without the life-or-death risk of COVID-19. I am blessed and fortunate to have had the true privilege to be taught and to now teach within the Gil Montague Regional School District. It is an honor that I hold dear. I am a proud Gil Montague alumna. And you have taught me how to think and how to speak out when it matters. I can imagine a time in the future when the risks will not outweigh the rewards, and the rewards will be better than we can even imagine now. But in the meantime, I will make each present day as great as I can make it and know that there is a giant overflowing bucket of marshmallows waiting for me. Right now, it is time to wait. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Carl DeJura.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carl DeJura. I'm the president of the Gil Montague Education Association. In recent meetings, the Gil Montague Education Association has stated its position that the majority of its members think the Gil Montague Regional School District should continue to teach remotely in order to safeguard the health and safety of our community members. In the last several weeks, articles have stated that 5% to 10% of COVID victims will be long haulers enduring continuing symptoms for an indeterminate period of time. And though the incidence of these long-term effects may be lower in young people, youth are not immune to enduring effects. One article predicts an epidemic of kidney disease is a consequence of infection from coronavirus. Controversy over the insertion and retraction by the CDC of warnings about the infection due to suspended aerosols have given voice to a number of experts who state that this means of infection has not received due recognition. Given the known and emerging facts, everyone should have concern for the increase in risk to the health of all community members, as well as the family and loved ones and the staff members throughout the region if in-person education resumes. In our area, many districts, including East Hampton, Frontier, Hallam, Mohawk, Pioneer, South Hadley, Northampton, and Greenfield currently teach remotely. Greenfield, our next-door neighbor with whom our district citizens freely intermingle, apparently has the blessing of Desi to do so, which we can only deduce from the decision by Desi to exceed its authority in attempt to force 16 districts, including Gil Montague, into submission, though not Greenfield. Those who support changing to hybrid must recognize that threatening to punish a district with an educational program audit for not complying with Desi's wishes is a misuse of authority. Regardless of any decision made here, we hope all 16 school committees will protest the coercion. And we hope that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees stands up to this bullying for its member districts. For its part, the Gil Montague Education Association has been in contact with Senator Comerford, Comerford's office to seek redress for this egregious, ill-informed, and inconsistent attack. We urge the school committee not to act in response to Desi threats because we believe it would be successfully challenged. I'm going to skip apart because a lot of this has been spoken to by other people. The report on the condition of the HVAC in the district has been completed, and a verbal summary has been shared with the association. But we have not yet seen the report. If memory serves, the verbal summary indicated a target air exchange rate of two changes per hour per room, though I might have misheard. Either way, hopefully, the district plans to adhere to the industry standards of 4.5 changes of air per hour at a minimum, which should be the performance sought for health and safety for everyone in the building. We look forward to seeing the written report, including the remediation and upgrades being instituted. I don't want to belabor previously made legitimate points in favor of continuing remote learning, especially since other staff members have delivered eloquent statements on the subject. We hope that you, school committee members, will give due consideration to all of these rational and reasonable pleas. In summary, the members of the Gil Montague Education Association maintain the remaining remote is the best course for all concerned. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for addressing the committee this evening. That concludes everyone that I had on the list wishing to speak tonight.
Thank you, Jennifer, and thank you, everyone, for voicing your opinions. Moving on to important events, the Pandemic Response Advisory Committee continues regular weekly meetings on Wednesdays, 4:15 to 5:15. And the second item is an update on food service. Do we have anything to add to that at this point?
Joanne, is there anything that you'd like to add related to food service? It's continuing along the same times as the summer. Do you want to add something in?
It's just continuing the same times as summer. We have the same basic routes. Irving is providing meals in Irving, and anybody can get a meal from any of the locations. If you are a Hillcrest student or a Hillcrest family, you don't need to go to Hillcrest to get your meal. You can go to any location throughout the town or towns. And we also have an evening pickup for families that can't get out at lunchtime. So that is from 3:30 till 5:30 at the high school on the two meal delivery days, Tuesdays and Fridays.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next on our agenda, the superintendent's report. Brian?
So the state still remains in Phase 3 of Step 1 of reopening. It has been the same since July 6. The state hasn't changed its phases since July 6. The Weekly COVID Public Health Report for September 2016 for the 11 towns that we watch, none of those towns had a single case in the last 14 days, with the exception of Greenfield, which had less than five cases in the last 14 days. In the state, there were, there was an increase of approximately 400 cases in the state over the previous 14-day period, bringing the state count to 4,510 cases in the last 14 days. Franklin County has had five cases in the last 14 days. So as I, as far as giving a summary on the reopening of school in the first week of school, thank you to the teachers for sharing some of the feedback. Thank you also to many of the parents who shared not only positive feedback for the efforts of teachers, but also some of the experiences, challenges, and experiences that they had, in particular with younger students, and in some cases with, with access to technology. As I shared in a message to the community last week, the district experienced some problems with our network during the opening week. There appear to have been minimal disruptions to instructional connections, although this seems to have been more extensive, more likely to occur for those who were on campus at the high school and the middle school. However, administrators and assistants experienced challenges in remaining connected. This past Friday afternoon and Saturday morning, Technology Director Tina Mahaney and her team shut down the network in order to replace some cables. As of Monday morning, the network speed and connectivity are again quick and reliable. In fact, I would assert this is the quickest that my email has ever worked. So thank you to Tina and to her team for their relentless pursuit of the problem. In the schools, as far as student engagement, Sheffield had only six of 219 students that did not engage in Week 1, and outreach to those families has resolved and reconnected each of those families as of the first days of the week this week. Gil had 100% of its students engage in learning in the first week of school. The middle school had seven of 211 students. Two of those students did not have email addresses and had other technical issues that limited access. Excuse me. The high school had only six of 303 students who were not connected at all during the week. Three of those students had reasons and had previously communicated to the school why they wouldn't be out. So at Hillcrest, first graders were the only students in attendance as pre-K and kindergarten begins this week. Preschool and kindergarten had their orientations last week. There were 44 first graders, and there were a total of seven absences last week. Three of those absences were, have been, have since been resolved and were due to technology issues in the first two days of school. So thank you to everybody for their efforts in the opening of school. And that's basically it as far as the superintendent's report for the school committee meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Business and operations report, Joanne?
Just open up to it here. Right, I provided you with an expenditure report of where we are. It shows every single line in the general fund and some of the larger revolving funds. And then I put together an operating report. Did you all receive that today? Okay, so the operating statement is really early, but we're looking at revenues, which we recently revised when we got the new Chapter 70 numbers. And so there's not a whole lot of change there in what we think we're going to receive compared to what we, how we budgeted. And that's the reason there's no changes there. Normally, our revenue was put together back in January, and so by now, we have some differences. But we were able to adjust those when we found the new Chapter 70. So on the expense side of things, we have a couple of positions that aren't filled yet. Our tuitions are, we have some savings on tuition, but we also have some excess in, like, school choice and charter. We're just not sure where those numbers are going to land. And we'll see some savings in our transportation line and our athletics if school doesn't go back into session soon. So some of those savings, you know, we have savings in utilities and busing and some of the staffing positions. So we're going to be able to use some of that, those funds to help cover the cost of getting our building, the buildings repaired, the ventilation, UNIVENT systems. We'll be able to adjust our funds for that. We also have more of the CARES Grant funding. So I'm going to be looking at the CARES Grant funding, spend some of that money on the filtration and the ventilation. Some of the general fund, I have also reached out to the towns. So overall, you know, it's really hard to put together a operating statement this early in the year, but I just wanted you to have a look at where, where we are. So this includes putting money in to get some work done that needs to be done. The next item I have is the Transportation MOA. So we have received a signed copy back from Kuzmeskus. This is a 6.8% reduction in the cost of transportation when we're not in session, and when we are in session, then we'll pay the 100% of the cost. This will ensure that Kuzmeskus has staff on board, and they're paying their staffs. So when we are ready to return to school, they don't have to find bus drivers. We're also using some of the buses to transport our special ed out-of-district students because with social distancing, we're not able to share rides with other bus companies. And so we're really having a hard time finding transportation for our out-of-district placements. They're also looking at our routes with us and looking at our enrollment, and we'll be creating routes in our TransFinder program, which will be really helpful in having that put together. So that's another thing they're working on during this time. So we do need a vote on the Transportation MOA. Do we want to wait till later, Jane?
I don't see why we can't vote on it now if that's acceptable to the group. Entertain a motion. Mike made the motion to approve the MOA. Heather, seconded. Any discussion or questions for Joanne? In that case, all those in favor? Okay, that looks like we have it unanimously. Thank you. All set, and Joanne, next on your list?
Yep, and next, we have a generous donation from Greenfield Savings Bank to the athletic department for a softball backstop. The funds are going to be deposited into a donation account for that purpose, to purchase the backstop. $17,600.
And that documentation is in your packet tonight. I'll entertain a motion to approve the donation. And Mike, thank you. Any questions or discussion for Joanne about that? Except for a really large thank you, I think on our behalf, that's wonderful. We really appreciate the fact that they're very, very generous with the school district. We appreciate that a lot. All those in favor? Okay, it looks like we have a unanimous approval. Thank you.
That's all I have tonight.
Okay, anything else for Joanne? Jennifer?
Oh, sorry, this is.
Oh, sorry, this isn't for Joanne, but I'm getting some messages that MCTV is not playing the school committee. I don't know if there's anything we can, can do about that, but I'm getting messages saying it's just like music and there's nothing on.
That's correct. Sorry, we had to stop the live streaming because it stopped working for MCTV so that we are now recording and will be posting it on the school committee page by tomorrow.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so thank you for letting us know, Jennifer. That means it was their technical difficulties, right? Thanks.
Which will totally be on my shoulders, unfortunately, Jane. But yeah, no, I, I, yeah, MCTV is, is fine. It's on my shoulders and I do apologize.
Well, it's not all as simple as it seems to those of us that don't begin to understand it. Thank you. Okay, next we have school committee reports. The warrant subcommittee has approved, has signed approval for the accounts payable warrant number 3107 dated 9/23/2020. And that is to pay outstanding bills. The amount is for $75,185.26. I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Haley, thank you.
Second.
And Mike, second. Any questions or comments about that? The AP warrants are always available to the full committee online, generally the, at least the week before our meeting. So all the details can be viewed by everyone. All right, all those in favor? Okay. Looks like we have it. Thank you. The next item is just a, an informational one. People have asked about what might be happening with the six town regional planning board, which we are a member. And I know Bill is very.
We're just, we're just starting to get back in gear. I think because the, for various reasons, the consultant's report was delayed, including, well, it doesn't matter why. In any event, they are committed to holding a, I believe, a public hearing at some point this fall. The six town study group has not met for over a month. Any parts of it have not met for over a month. I'm on the education subcommittee and we plan to be meeting. Our chairperson canvassed everybody as to what day in the next 10 days we could all agree to meet. So that's in the process. And I think the whole committee will be meeting soon as well. But I specifically refer everybody to the email you've got on the 18th with all of the documents from the consultants and read them. And they are pretty self-explanatory and very very detailed as to their suggestions for how we could, could proceed. And I, and Jane, you said Brian may want to say something too. But mostly it's going to be in those three reports, which we all have received.
Okay, and that was on the 18th in our emails, correct?
Yeah.
Thank you. Brian, anything else that you wanted to add?
No, I was just curious about the information. Obviously with my head buried in pandemic planning, I didn't want these two, two groups that I don't want to lose sight of, one being the regional planning group and the other one being civic leaders. And I constantly, constantly will need to have those things kept on my plate. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill, for serving in that capacity. Bill is our Gil representative on that group and we still would welcome any Montague member of the school committee who would like to join as well. And that can be done at any time by just letting us know. Okay, thanks, Bill. That's very helpful. Okay, under business. We need to vote the policy changes related to COVID-19. The policy is EBCFA. We discussed it at a couple of meetings. We had printed versions. Our nurse COVID leader, Melissa Bednarski, also added an addendum last, at our last meeting and we discussed and revised that. And that's now part of the current copy that is in your packet. It's the exact same document that we reviewed previously twice. And it now has the correction to the addendum that we all agreed on. I will entertain a motion to approve that policy.
So moved.
Mike, thank you.
Second.
And Heather, second. Any questions or discussions about the policy? I think we did have some rather lengthy discussion last time, which was very helpful. And it looks like that policy, Melissa, as a nurse, also consulted with the boards of health and any other agencies that would be helpful in determining how that should be worded. And it seems to be very thorough and accurate. And thank you to her especially. All right, all those in favor? Okay, looks like we have that unanimously. The next item is to review and have a potential vote on COVID-related handbook addendums. Brian?
Yeah, so there is only one item. It's directly related to that policy. However, we can't vote on it tonight. We could leave it to school councils to vote. What we're waiting for is Department of Education to give us a legal advisory on this because it sits in that realm between denying a student access to education for legitimate behavior reasons and suspension. And so the language that we put in to a potential addendum for any time students are on campus reads as such, while on campus, any student who refuses to comply with COVID-related safety protocols, such as safe physical distancing, hand washing, or wearing masks as directed, will be required to be picked up by parents and attend classes through remote learning until the student agrees to comply with the school and district's safety requirements. And so we're just waiting for DESI legal advisory. That was the language that we, we got from them to have them review and they have not yet made a decision. I, I would assume that in our commissioner, one of the commissioners' phone calls that we have, he said this week we should know. So if that happens to be the case, I'd like to share that with school councils if it's approved to just add to the handbook as an addendum. Our legal counsel did advise that anything that we do that's COVID-related should be put in the handbook and made really apparent to parents and students if DESI gives us the okay.
Okay, thank you. Then we will bring that back when we've gotten all that information necessary and then we will vote on it. Thank you, Brian. We already, item C, we did vote the transportation memorandum of agreement already. Under D, Brian, anything under that? You're muted.
I'm not going to be making a recommendation tonight that the school vote to change the existing learning model. And I, I will explain the reason why with a procedure that I would like to follow. So we've begun to get our facilities HVAC reports. The title of the reports are the ventilation evaluation reports. And these are the reports that caused me already in two previous school committee meetings to delay the vote. Even though we are receiving the information from them, I want to be able to do a couple of different things. One, I'm just going to give a little bit of a summary of each school. Hillcrest Elementary School, the school's HVAC system has the most favorable assessment and needs the least repair work in order to increase air exchange. The repair work involves the replacement of a number of belts, pulleys, and motors and associated materials. And there are some areas that have to have ventilation added as there is very little ventilation. This includes adding ventilation and increasing fan motor size to move air out of those areas of that building. Gil Elementary is a little bit more extensive. Recommendations here include the replacement of four defective zone valves to increase the speed of the exhaust fan motors and installation of ventilation in guidance administrative areas in the nurse's office. The contractor is still assessing to see if the cafeteria and kitchen exhausts are connected before he can give us a readout on, on that particular area of the building to find out whether or not they're connected. The high school, middle school is the largest building in our district and requires significant repairs to the HVAC system. This also includes the addition of additional ductwork necessary to increase air exchange in the currently air restricted areas of the building. The large gathering areas, such as the auditorium, gymnasium, library, and music room, all require significant repairs on air exchange units to ensure that they're fully functional. Classroom airflow deficiencies are not yet determined to be a result of, you know, faulty computer controls or mechanical problems. And so that's still under review, but at least we got an initial ventilation reading for each of the rooms. Part of the reason that I've not shared the reports is that we don't yet have Sheffield Elementary. We anticipated getting it within the last day or so. It did not arrive prior to this meeting. But for that reason, I don't feel comfortable necessarily making a recommendation, but rather asking the committee to consider holding an emergency meeting next week so that we could potentially consider something different. And obviously I would recommend that we cancel the meeting if we, again, don't have enough information to convene with the information that we need to be transparent about the safety of the building. It's great that we're starting to get the information and that we've started to take action. So while we wait for the Sheffield report, in order to maximize the health and cleanliness of the air in the buildings from the filtering process, the district has purchased $80,000 worth of air scrubbers and pure, and air purifiers. These units include HEPA filtration, which reduces airborne surface contaminants. The UV light in the systems mimic the cleansing nature of sunlight and the system has been proven effective to eliminate viruses, bacterias, bacteria, and allergens in the air and on surfaces. As far as the building repairs at this particular point, some parts have been ordered for Hillcrest and I believe that process is going to begin shortly. But the current estimated repairs beyond the money that has already been spent to order the air scrubbers is already approaching nearly $100,000. We also plan to look at the Sheffield assessment, which is likely to result in additional expenditures to bring the HVAC system up to speed. What I would like to do is share those assessments, the initial assessments, with the community for the sake of transparency, along with an action plan that's been devised with this contractor or combinations of contractors to get this work done as quickly as possible. And then get another ventilation evaluation report on each of the rooms in the buildings, as you'll see in these reports when we release them to the public, so that they can see that what, how the work has changed the airflow in the building. And that will allow those the air scrubbers and air purifiers to have their maximum effectiveness. So that's, that's basically my summary in the rationale.
Does anyone have any questions for Brian at this point? Haley?
Yeah, I just wanted to recognize that Brian has recommended three times now over the course of the last couple of months with the school committee not vote to reopen because he and all of us, we wish to proceed with an abundance of caution and hold off until we felt that we could assure the highest level of safety possible. I think that shows a great deal of transparency and responsibility to the people who will be going into the buildings. And I just hope that it is recognized that way.
Thank you, Haley. Anyone else? Jennifer?
Hi, just wanted to share anecdotally, I'm a bit surprised because the high school, middle school is our newest building and that needs the least amount of work. So I think that just shows how important it is to get these evaluations and really base our decision-making on, on data. And I, I, I know that after the work is done, we'll get to see another report. And that's great, but I would have, I would have expected, you know, Hillcrest to be much, in much worse shape, being that it's such an older building compared to the high school, middle school. So just shows why it's so important that we, you know, do the due diligence and, and get these actually evaluated and not just make assumptions.
Thank you, Jennifer. One of the things that I will add to that is, you know, I was also surprised given the fact that it's a newer facility, but it also very likely has more powerful and delicate equipment that probably, you know, when you look at some older equipment, it's, it, it looks like it's built to go for a thousand years. And when you take sort of newer stuff with different materials, it requires frequent and consistent maintenance. And if at any time the district skimped on the maintenance, did something on the cheap over the last couple of decades, you know, it's just like if you don't change your oil in the car, it's going to fall apart. And so if, if at any point we didn't follow regular maintenance guidelines, there's going to be a negative impact on the building. The positive part of, of, you know, it's one of the few positives coming out of this is that we're now going to put our buildings in a position. Fortunately, we have some COVID funding. Joanne Blyer is being very creative to, to work with the towns to try to get additional funding. I may even put in a, another call to the commissioner to say, if you have any money, it might make it a little bit easier. But at the same time, the benefit that we'll get from this is, you know, there's already, Heath Cummings has already put a maintenance schedule in place for when that is repaired. It is far more frequent than what had been put down in the past and it will be adhered to. So those systems should be in good shape for decades to come, once this work is done. So we will definitely have a benefit from this. That's more than just making the building healthier for this year.
Thank you. Long term is always a good way to look. Anyone else? Any questions or comments for Brian? Okay, thank you. In that case, please tentatively put on your schedule an additional meeting next Tuesday at 6:30. And the aim would be to have a one item agenda at that time. Thank you. Next on the list, equity among schools. Anything, I know we have asked for this to be on at every agenda. Is there anything that any member of the school committee would like to add? Or any questions they'd like to ask at this point? Okay, thank you. The next item, we already voted to accept the donation of funds from Greenfield Savings Bank that they so generously gave us for a new softball backstop. Next is discussion and potential vote on a recommendation on the district and school goals. Brian?
So I'm, I'm making a recommendation to the full committee after having some discussions just with the chair and assistant chair about the district, obviously, as I came on board, was wrapping up a three-year strategic plan. That street, three-year strategic plan lifted the, the district in a, in a way that created a foundation for, you know, a very professional committee, a new superintendent, a skilled group of educators, and a really dedicated group of parents in this community as a springboard to continue to move forward. In this particular context, where our teachers are doing things very differently, our parents are incurring things very differently. It's very challenging to get a representative group of people together. I feel like at this particular point, putting together a long-term strategy document in this environment would be either a perfunctory act or would be counterproductive. What I would prefer to do is extend this plan with, to come back on the October 13th meeting. We'll look at it as, as an administrative team and examine whether or not there are any elements of the district plan that have been brought to fruition and then not insert anything in there, but rather pull it out and have building-based items related to making sure that technological aspects of instruction and related communications to families are focused for this, this current con- families are focused for this, this current context and this current school year, rather than going through a process of revisioning. And my suggestion would be to have the school committee take a look at our annual plan, our district plan to be presented on October 13th as an extension, effectively turning that into a four-year plan. There are a number of initiatives that continue from the plan, some of which were not able to be completed in the spring, and even those that would have been able to be quote-unquote "completed" still would require support in practice, and we would have been piling other initiatives on top of those and trying to have them run simultaneously. And for those of you who are educators, you know what that's like. When I came into this position, I did not want to induce initiative fatigue, and I think this is the one place where I would implore the committee to provide us the opportunity to exist in these circumstances and continue the good work that's been done to make sure it gets done very well, as opposed to adding new things on top of it, until we have the opportunity to actually get together with a representative group of people and look ahead and look out of this current set of circumstances.
Thank you. Anyone have any thoughts on that suggestion? It seems to me at this point that makes a lot of sense. The many district and building goals by their very nature are rather long-term and can benefit from continuation, and it would seem at this point, last year was rather unceremoniously interrupted, and this year is of necessity quite different. So I think, you know, having the buildings look at those, Brian, certainly makes sense, and then we can look at them again as well and discuss them on the 13th of October, if that's acceptable. Okay, anything else on that? Thank you. Next is, we included in your packet this time, the Mass Association of School Committee information about their delegate assembly every November, as usually as part of the in-person conference and hyannis. There are various, usually around 10 to a dozen resolutions that the group discusses and either endorses or votes down. The entire conference will be hanging, will be handled virtually, and we will be all getting information on how to sign up for the different workshops. And this year, that will make it much more available to people who weren't able to attend it on the Cape, and those workshops have always been useful. There's so much to learn, even for someone who's been on school committee a long time. It's very helpful, and there are generally a number of sections that can be considered part of the charting the course, which we are encouraged to have all new members take, so that'll make it much more possible as well. In order to have a say in the actual resolutions, each school district committee needs to appoint a delegate. In this case, the annual meeting is going to be held on November 7th. It was scheduled at a different date, but it's now November 7th at 1 o'clock, and it is, is to be held virtually as of this time. That was the last notice that we were given, so if someone would like to be the official delegate, you will be able to participate remotely in that meeting this time. So that's something that I did not remember to put in the previous meeting, because we did have a few other things on our mind, but we need to notify them of who our official delegate is by October 16th. And therefore, it would make us very short notice after our next meeting, it has to get to them by the 16th, so if anyone is particularly eager to try that at this point, I will say it's extremely instructive. It's, it gives a really good insight into the workings of the Mass Association of School Committees as a whole and the different school committees individually that bring up some of these resolutions and really feel it's important for them to go forward. If nobody is convinced at this moment that they would be wanting to do that, we could still discuss it on the first meeting in October, because the information can be sent by email, which means it would only take, it could be sent the next day, we'd still get it there in time for October 16th. It's not required that every school committee that is a...
You just canceled.
She's frozen, so I guess I'm next in line. So, any takers? Anyone want to be the delegate?
I'd do it, but I'm, I'm a lone parent that day, so I don't know it'd go too well.
And I'm, you know, remote schooling as well, so I think we're all...
It's a Saturday, so...
Oh, I didn't even look at that part, okay.
Doesn't necessarily make it more appealing, but...
Yeah, it actually doesn't either. You're right. So while you were frozen, Jane, no one, no one signed up to do that?
That surprises me, but I can understand. I do, I always enjoyed it, and I, it might be shorter when it's done virtually, because sometimes in person it tended to get a bit lengthy. I think it might be a more efficient process. So, you know, we can all think about it, and somebody might decide that they would want to do that by our next meeting. I will put it on the agenda.
And I can also say with what Jane said, I've been to the last couple, and it's extremely helpful. So if anyone can fit it into their schedule to go to any of the virtual courses that they'll offer, it's certainly worth it.
Thank you. There are a wide variety of things, and we should all be getting the information from MASC about those things. If I'm unsure that everyone has gotten it, I will just forward it as I get it, as I've been doing with other emails from them. Okay, any questions or comments about that? All right, thank you. We also have in our packet an MOA for elementary team leaders, and we will need to have a vote on that as well. The the general change that this entails is an increase in stipend for the elementary team leaders for the extra work that they are involved in, in the school year. That's been increased in this MOA by $1,000. And there's also a job description included as well. Anyone have any questions or comments about the job description or the MOA? Haley?
Jane, I have a foggy memory that this stipend increase is bringing it up to the same level that the middle school, high school leaders are at, is that true?
Yes. The comparable positions at the middle school, high school, I believe, are probably curriculum chairs, something of that type, but I believe, yes, you are correct in remembering. That was the interest, was to bring it and make it equal in pay because of the work involved. Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd support bringing it up, making it more equal.
Thank you. Anyone else have questions or comments about that? In that case, I will entertain a motion to approve the MOA.
So moved.
Haley, thank you.
Second.
Heather, thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Okay, thank you, that looks unanimous. And please make sure you have the, in addition to the dates that are listed here, the next two dates in October, please add September 29th at 6:30 tentatively, and as Brian said, if there's no need to have the meeting, we will cancel it as soon as we realize that. Anything else? Okay, in that case, I think we've covered it. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, Haley.
Okay, all those in favor?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you all very much. See you soon.
See you next time.
Be well.